Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, September 15th, 2014. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:00 PM. Please rise for flag salute. Mr. Valori, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which is united, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman, Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancy Roserma, Township Clerk, and Ann N. Cucci, CFO.
She's not here.
Oh, Ann's not here tonight, okay. The agenda of this meeting, to the extent known as is follows: Property identified as Block 421, Lot 29, on the tax map of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, and located along Route 46 between Waterview Boulevard and Intervale Drive. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on September 10, 2014, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on September 12, 2014, and was forwarded by Fax to the Star Ledger and Precipity Life on September 10, 2014.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go into a closed session. It will not be like it was last week. This will be very brief, about 10, 15 minutes at most. Resolution: Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege for the following litigation matter: RD Realty versus Township of Precipity Troy Hills, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality, the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn call by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Before we open up to the public hearing, we'd just like to state that we have been informed that we are not under the time constraints that we originally thought that we might be. Secondly, we will not be voting, I don't know what kind of information is out there, but we will not be voting on anything tonight and/or at our meeting on the 23rd. So, just to let you know that ahead of time. And before any vote is taken, there will be public notice, plenty of time for the public to be notified when that vote or when that action will occur. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
On this matter. Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, at last week's meeting, if you have already spoken, okay, this is tonight's meeting, you've already had your turn. You'll be given three minutes. Please come up, sign in, state your name and address, and anyone that has spoken at last week's meeting, you've had your turn. So this, tonight, will be for anyone that has not spoken yet on this matter.
Hi, Stephen Frankel, One Winding Way. Some of the questions I'm going to ask have probably been published, I'm sorry for being behind. As I understand, there is some portion of public money going to be used to fund the buffer. Am I correct?
Why did you ask your question?
That is the question.
Do you have any other questions?
I do. How much is it? And if that is the case, I just don't understand how we can rationalize funding a for-profit enterprise by essentially giving them a subsidy, a break, money in their pocket at taxpayer expense. I'm just wondering how you guys, as a council, are going to be recommending that to whatever powers that be that fund that open space fund. So if you can answer my first question first, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. The public money that is contemplated by the agreement would be a grant from the Morris County Open Space Trust Fund.
That is funded from what?
Morris County collects money through taxes to the county. Those taxes were approved by the voters. That money goes into a pot, and then that pot is...
Okay, so it's tax money, that's, that's, okay.
Yeah, and that pot is then used to consider open space applications. The money is always allocated or paid to either a for-profit entity or to a landowner.
And how much is it?
The application is for $3.5 million.
And if we didn't grant that or ask for that grant, the builder would have to pay that cost. Is that a fair assessment?
No.
Where'd the money come from, if we don't give it to them?
Well, there would be, there would be no, there would be no deal, there would be no settlement at that point.
So they're unwilling to purchase this unless they get this money?
I think the better way to say it is, is that it's a contingency in the agreement, so...
I thought you said that the deal wouldn't happen, unless I misheard what you said.
Yeah, if Parcipity's application, the way the settlement agreement is structured, it's a contingency. So if Parcipity's application is denied, then there's no obligation for Precipity to move forward with the settlement.
Or the builder.
With the settlement as structured.
When you say settlement, what settlement are you referring to?
Well, the settlement proposal that I outlined last time, which in very simple terms would involve rezoning of the approximately 17 acres along Route 46 for retail, and the rezoning of the top roughly 10 acres for open space, with that 10 acres being acquired by the township using open space money. So we would be purchasing the property.
Okay, I'm sorry, when you said settlement, I thought it was a deal, some sort of legal action.
Well, it is. That would resolve, that would resolve the case that is pending in court, and it would also release the township from any and all additional claims that RD Realty may have now or in the future.
Okay. With regard to that case, do we have a feeling of where we stand as far as winning that case, so it doesn't have to be settled?
Well, there's a briefing schedule, there's a motion for summary judgment that is pending. As I've indicated, while I can't give any guarantees in litigation, that would not be responsible of me to do, I do feel very confident in the township's position. But, you know, this particular case is not the only consideration, because then the question becomes, what next? What's the next project? What's the next litigation? So the issue is not viewed solely in the context of this particular case.
Do you mean litigation by RD Realty?
Or some subsequent contract purchaser. I mean, you know, at that point, the property will still be there, it'll still be POD-zoned, and it would still be vulnerable to future developers coming in and wanting to develop it in ways in which, you know, may not be desired by the township. And so what this settlement will do is bring permanency. It will ensure that the top 10 acres will never ever be able to develop, and there's only one way to ensure that the top 10 acres or 9.26 acres can never be developed, and that is to acquire a property right in that property by way of a conservation easement or outright acquisition of the fee title. And other than doing that, there is no way to ensure that that property will never be developed.
So if we sell it to them with the stipulations that we see here, there's no guarantee that they can't develop that land?
No, if the settlement goes forward as proposed, and the township pays the $3.5 million, okay, pursuant to the settlement agreement, then that property will have been acquired with open space funds. It will be a deed into the township, and because it would be deeded over by using open space trust monies, the property would never, ever, ever be able to be developed.
All right, so...
It's the only way...
Your time is up, so...
It's the only way you can save the property, guarantee that you save the property from development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please. [inaudible] Hi, gentlemen, I'm Rudy Katzenberger from Three Seater Terrace over in Lake Intervale. Been there for close to 50 years, Precipity even longer, and love this township, love the schools, love my neighbors, and that's why I'm here. Destroying our environment, jeopardizing our health and welfare is absolutely wrong. We must preserve these 27 acres for ourselves and for future citizens. We do not need upscale food stores or upscale stores in Precipity. We have these, if you need them, already very close by. We need open space as originally planned for the Waterview Office Complex. We need our government to be faithful to the ordinance that protects the Forest Drive community. We don't need the carbon dioxide. Now, this, you know, these are real things, even though we, you know, can't smell them. We don't need the carbon dioxide from hundreds of cars using over 700 parking spots, from hours of idling cars at traffic lights, and the congestion that only add to this pollution. The 287 Route 80 interchange by state records already has a very high carbon dioxide reading, only to be driven higher by this unwarranted impact of additional cars and delivery trucks in this concentrated area. Strong, faithful elected officials listen to the people they represent. Those of us affected by this unnecessary development expect you to preserve these 27 acres. Bellmead would readily settle for a deal to give them the legacy of being part of preserving this property for open space. Please do not enter into this proposed settlement to degrade our environment further. Vote "No" and let the courts put RD Realty in its place. I thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Sir, just one point of clarification. Again, if the settlement is not implemented, the result is not that the property is automatically preserved. At that point, the property will be, you know, as it is today, which is zoned as POD, which would permit office, and would be vulnerable to other types of unwanted development in the manner that I described at the last meeting. So I just don't want there to be confusion that if the settlement's not entered into, that that means that the property will be preserved, because that would not be accurate.
But it could be preserved.
The only way to preserve, again, the only way to preserve the property would be to buy it. There's been, there's been no indication that, I suppose, somebody would sell you property at any price, the question is, I guess, what price, but RD Realty is under contract to buy the property, and there's been no indication that the property owner, you know, intends to do anything other than sell it to RD Realty at this particular point in time.
Roberta Chopko, 93, Intervale. If I understand you correctly, for this to proceed, that portion at 17 acres or so would have to be rezoned, correct?
That's correct, that's part of the settlement.
All right, my question is, what precedent does that set in the town? If they are able to rezone a portion, why isn't every other complex or property in town eligible for similar rezoning, claiming they did it, we should too, we could too?
Do you have any other questions?
No, that's my question, on the rezoning.
The settlement of a lawsuit that was described will not legally give any other property owner any enhanced rights to require their property to be rezoned. So legally, there is no precedent set that will give other property owners incentive to challenge...
Perhaps not legally, but in theory?
Well, there's no legal, you know, legally speaking, in terms of whether the township would be vulnerable or more vulnerable to similar kinds of lawsuits by other property owners, the answer is no. There would not be any legal precedent set, township would not be prejudiced legally in any way by settling this lawsuit in the manner described as it relates to other property owners.
I understand the legal position, but does anybody else have a position, even in theory, not legal?
Mr. Snikes, perhaps from a planning perspective, you might be able to discuss what you feel may or may not result in the future as a result of the settlement agreement, assuming that it's entered into, from a planning and economic perspective?
Certainly. I would see that every case has to be viewed on its own merits, and that's the issue at hand. And that what is at hand here is something of a unique condition for the property, its configuration, its location, plus at the same time, it's going to have its own inherent characteristics to its own development criteria. That's going to, excuse me, that's going to require certain setbacks, things of that nature, that are not going to fit other zones or other areas. And so it's very specific, we're being very specific about this area, and therefore would not set the precedent. And in fact, in my professional opinion, I think that this would actually, there was concern at the last meeting about whether or not this would spread as a zone. And what I see here is actually something that will enhance the adjacent zones. You have existing office development in the POD District that people have recognized is not at full capacity or at full occupancy. If you were to develop more office at this location, it would further dilute that capacity to be absorbed of the existing office space that's there. I think at the same time, this retail type of facility at this location, within some walking distances to many of the buildings, will actually improve the value of those adjacent buildings, in my opinion.
That's interesting, because I thought I read someplace, perhaps the focus, that there are offices or companies looking to relocate because they're worried about the traffic that this will bring for their personnel. And I don't know how accurate that reporting was, but that's what I read. I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I have several questions. One is, is a copy of the proposed zoning law available besides this plan? Because all, I mean, what governs this development is the zoning law, not that plan, and so what we need to see is the proposed zoning law. Secondly, I would wonder whether Precipity has considered going to Bellmead and purchasing this for open space, and how that would fit in with your open space and recreational plans, and, you know, deal with Bellmead, not RA, wherever the developer is. So I'd be curious to know what you've done on that. Secondly, in terms of this open space, there are other ways of doing this besides buying it. Fundamentally, you could deed restrict that land just as it is, not pay them anything. So in reality, the open space, really what it's doing, is coming up with money for RA to make this a deal that they'll do from a business standpoint. You don't need to do open space purchase to deed restrict something permanently, there are plenty examples of that being around where you can do that. Thirdly, I would look at and say, if you are buying the land, you got a 200 buffer restriction here, I don't know why you ought to be paying them anything for the amount of land over the 200-foot buffer that's all around this property, because it's part of the zoning law, they ought to be living with the zoning law. My guess is, having been involved with some open space plans, this is all subject to assessments done by an outside third party, I would wonder who is this third party that's come up with the $3.5 million, because I know the Morris County Open Space will do that, and my guess is, they will not come up with $3.5 million, it'll be a lower number. And I would wonder then, what happens to this deal? If it's 3.5, it has to go through, is Precipity willing to step up and pay them above the assessed value of the land? Because there are some assessments have been done on neighboring properties here on open space, we've had it in Mountain Lakes, it is, and it's eight acres, is nowhere near $3.5 million. So I would wonder what you're, when you're doing this, how you're going to deal with this if this deal comes in and doesn't have $3.5 million. And fundamentally, what we're doing there is giving them money to make this go away.
Okay, sir, your time is up.
Okay, fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Take all your questions in the order that you raise them. First of all, there is not a copy of the actual ordinance available, it is still in the process of being prepared. The ordinance will be prepared in a manner that is consistent with the plan that has been shown and has been discussed, and the ordinance, you know, will be prepared and will be ready and will be viewable by the time an agreement is entered into. Some of the provisions in the ordinance that, you know, will be prevalent and that are not visible at the moment, but were discussed, are things like enhanced architectural features, public spaces, landscaping, things of that nature, to make the project more upscale, if you will. But the setbacks, the buffers, the square footages, all of the other attributes that have been described will be incorporated into the zoning. The other part about the settlement agreement that was discussed at the last meeting is that it will be recorded, it would be recorded in the clerk's office, and the restriction with regard to the tenant sizes would actually be deed restrictions and would be permanently part of the land. So you'll notice, for example, there's one building, I think the total is 32,000 square feet, but you couldn't have more than one space be more than 20,000 square feet. That would actually be in as a deed restriction against the property, and the point there is to keep the tenant sizes at what the township believes is a manageable level in terms of its size, but still large enough to attract some of the top-named tenants that are out there that would be likely to be attracted to a center that is anchored by Whole Foods. Second, with regard to Bellmead, as I indicated, Bellmead is under contract with RD Realty, and therefore, you know, that's their contract purchaser, we don't have the ability to circumvent RD Realty and speak directly to Bellmead. I can tell you that...
I would disagree with that, you can always talk to it.
Well...
You don't have to, they have a relationship with Bellmead, you can go to Bellmead, too.
Well, when one party is under contract and another, with another, and then another party seeks to circumvent that contractual right, there's a business...
You can always have discussions.
There's a business tort for that, it's called tortuous interference with contractual rights, and we have one lawsuit, we're not lucky to start any others. Based upon the reading of the contract that Bellmead has with RD Realty, Bellmead certainly has, as far as I can tell, they certainly have the right to terminate the contract with Bellmead at this point if they want to, they've decided not to do that, but, you know, we have to deal with RD Realty, not with Bellmead, so long as they're under contract, and they are. In terms of the deed restriction, simply incorrect to say that one party can give a deed restriction without any consideration. First of all, you know, Bellmead isn't going to agree, or RD Realty isn't going to agree to a deed restriction which would significantly devalue their property unless they were paid money or some other form of consideration for it. I just think it's simply incorrect to state that that's done all the time, it's not, there would have to be something of value given in order to receive the benefit...
Well, the value they're getting is the zoning adjustment, and that, there are, I can give you two examples of Mountain Lakes where...
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your time is up. There would have to be something of value. Obviously, RD Realty has, or, I'm sorry, Bellmead has an expectation in terms of what they are willing to accept in terms of the value of the property. So, you know, they're not willing to accept a settlement that does not involve the terms that have been outlined, this has been a very negotiated settlement, and I can just tell you that we would not be able to make the deal, but for the payment of the $3.5 million in order to preserve, you know, that 9.26 acres of property, we just, we wouldn't have gotten to the point that we're at. With regard to the 200-foot buffer, and you indicated, why pay more, you already have the buffer, that is also likewise, that's just not correct. As I have indicated before, first of all, the 200-foot buffer that you're referring to is in an ordinance as it relates to the current office. Ordinances can be changed all the time, there is no permanency to that so-called 200-foot buffer. And as I indicated last time, we actually performed a title search last year when this issue came up, to see whether or not there was a deed restriction or an easement of some sort that ran with the land and affixed this buffer, because that's the only way that it can be a true buffer and be permanent and not be able to be changed. There is no deed restriction, there is no easement of record, there is simply a setback or buffer in an ordinance for the current zone which can be changed very easily by this or any other future governing body by changing the ordinance. So I think that it's just not accurate and not productive to talk about this 200 feet in terms of it being permanent, or in terms of it, you know, being something that can't be taken away, because that's just not true, it's just not accurate.
That may...
The last part, sir, sir, the last part, dealt with the third-party appraisal, you're absolutely correct, that as part of the county's application, or, I'm sorry, as part of Precipity's application to Morris County, there was a requirement, as you point out... as you point out, and there always is, for open space application, that there be an appraisal. And the township did provide an appraisal by a licensed appraiser who appraised the property at a certain dollar amount that would support the acquisition price of $3.5 million. What I also indicated at the last meeting was that, for Oprah purposes, and I had this discussion with the county attorney, their view, and I, and I shared this view, is that the appraisal at this particular moment is, is not a document that, we believe that that's a deliberative document, meaning that it would not be able to be released to the public until such time as either there was a settlement agreement entered into, or the settlement agreement's effort terminated. And then at that point in time, I think that the appraisal submitted by the township would be available to the public. The reason why it's my view and the county's attorney's view that it's a deliberative document at this point is because it's a pending application and because, you know, we don't want to prejudice our position as it relates to a, a dollar figure with, with RDR Realty for the value of the land. And, and so for that reason, you know, we don't want RDR Realty to see the appraisal. And, and thus, it's a, it's a deliberative document. But rest be assured that there is an appraisal, and the appraisal does support the, the price of $3.5 million.
Okay. Could I just point out, on the, on the zoning, every, every town has, has setbacks and so forth. And you may be, you are right that you can go in and change setbacks, but a town does not have to do that. And so when you say that it can be changed, that's, that may be true. But when you have a precedent where it's in your town, you do not, as, as a council, have to go and change setbacks. And that's a negotiated item-
It's, sir, it's, sir, sir, you've had your, it's, it's not, it's not a, you, you raised the subject in, in the context of, there's nothing more to do because you have this 200-foot buffer. And, and I think you imply, I think it's fair to say that you implied that that was a, a permanent buffer. I simply wanted to make the point that it's not a, a permanent buffer. It's simply a provision that's contained in the ordinance. There is no permanency to it. And we checked the records to confirm that that's the case. And if somebody has information otherwise, we'd certainly like to see it. But we, we never have. And, and at least, it wasn't there when we did the title search last year. We haven't done the title search since, but I don't think anything's changed, at least in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.[763.82][763.82][applause]
Good evening. I thank you all for your continued service to the community, residents-
Sir, just state your name and address.
Oh, John Baylor, 51 Intervale. I thank all of you for your continued service to the community, residents, taxpayers, and voters of Parsippany. We have all had a lot of time to weigh the benefits of this developer's actions. In the past, to whom a concerned public was only met by insult, jeering from out-of-towners, no compromises, or worse, a lawsuit. So here we all sit in a good cop, bad cop scenario. Or should I say, a bad cop, good cop scenario, where I'm sure you have been sold without the ability to communicate to the community how this new plan is everything that the resident, taxpayer, voter, corporate citizen, and township asked for. The plan is a bit better. Heck, there's no big box. And such a nice big buffer. But really, the proposed buffer is an insult to the township and its residents. To take our open space funds for what purpose? A playing field? A park? Perhaps just to further pad the pockets of the developer? All this to change an office park setting into what? I wish we were talking about a nine-to-five office site that wanted to increase a 200-foot zoning ordinance. Instead, we would pay millions to face a 24/7 business with 100 or 300-foot infringed upon, landlocked, no-use buffers. All in all, you know better than us the lengths the developer has gone to trying to make this thing happen, or how they have conducted themselves in the process. Remember the T-shirts? Drinks and hors d'oeuvres? The surveys and the fake online entities? When it comes down to it, can they be trusted to respect anything? I would not say they are the devil. Or that money is the root of all evil. But wow, they impress some. Most don't live, work, pay taxes, or vote here. Please don't be impressed. Thank you.[936.63][936.63][applause]
Hello, I'm Diane Milligan, 8 East Brooklyn Drive. And I just had a couple of questions. Mr. Inglisino, you had gone over, I think it was called objectives of the settlement, and how they were met. And I was just curious, where did the settlement discussions come from? Who broached the subject to begin with? Because I'm just curious why we would consider this settlement. The land is clearly zoned for office buildings. RDR approached the town to rezone it. They were told no. And so now they're suing us? I, I don't know why we'd even consider it.
Do you have any other questions?
No, that's basically it.
Okay. It's certainly not uncommon that when a lawsuit is, is filed for any reason, that there would always be discussions and settlement discussions between lawyers in consultation with their clients to see how the, the matter might be resolved. And so there were settlement discussions, as typically take place in, in most any lawsuits, that have resulted in a, a prospective settlement agreement that, as you indicate, and as I indicated at the last meeting, achieves several important policy objectives that were established by the council, and, and frankly, by what was heard by the public, to some extent, the last, the last go-around. Obviously, before any vote was taken, the governing body, appropriately so, wanted to, to hear input from the public. So this is part of that process.
Okay. Well, I, I hope that, since you had said now, there's no rush to decide this. I hope you wait until the matter is dealt with in court. And I hope that, that the judge rules against RDR. And I just hope that you vote against this. Thank you.[1100.01][1100.01][applause]
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Is it possible that I can ask a question or two?
Sir, please state your name and address.
Curtis Hornberg, 85 Red Gate Road. Is it possible that I can ask a few questions, get feedback, and then continue?
Problem is, if the feedback takes more than three minutes, it'll cut-
I know, I'll get cut. I understand that. I have a question. I'm not sure how to pronounce your name. Snikus or Snickus?
Snikus.
Snikus. Mr. Snikus, how much developable land, developable land, is available in Parsippany at this moment?
Should I answer that now?
Yeah, I'd like that.
It's actually not clear. I do not have that exact number.
Oh, I found it on the internet. I found it on the internet, either in the master deed or something to do with the parks, written by you. To quote you, it's 50.6 in our entire town. 50.6. This is 26. Okay? More than half of what we got left of developable land. Now, we know there's streams. We know there's parks, other areas. But what's left to develop, you only have 50.6. How big is the town? How many acres?
That may have actually changed because of that, when that ordinance was, or that open space plan was conceived, that may have changed due to development.
Would it go up or down?
It probably was, has gone down.
It would go down. Okay. How many acres are in the entire town?
I don't have the entire acreage in mind. Sorry.
What I read in, also in the same report, 26,000 acres. We have 50 left. I ask you just, this is really important to everybody. 50. That's, that's, that's a crazy number in my mind. Plus, we've had a lot of different things going on. We've had a lot of allegations, back and forth, of improprieties. Now we're negotiating with this developer, and the improprieties are very political in, in nature. There were many of them, back and forth, back and forth. He did this, she did that. I don't feel that I can trust the negotiations. I really like a judge to rule. That's just my opinion. I don't trust it. I do not wish to speak badly to anyone. I, I have respect. But I really wish that a judge would just rule on this so that taxpayers could sit back and say, at least we know what happened. Anything behind closed doors. Who, who is negotiating this? I'll, wait a minute.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay, one last question. Who are the negotiators? Just a law firm?
Sir, I, I'm not really at liberty to speak in, about the settlement discussions other than to say that, as is typical, I would enter into negotiations in close consultation with my client. And that's, that's true in, in any negotiation such as this. And that's all I'm prepared to say about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.[1323.33][1323.33][applause]
Franta Pritchard, 11 Glen Road, Parsippany. I spoke last week, and I really don't have any other questions or anything else to add except for, I'm opposed to this. I believe that we need our, we deserve our day in court. And-
Ma'am, you said you spoke last week?
Yes, I did.
Okay, if this is for anybody new. Sorry.
It's Bob Sudol, 75 Forest Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want you to vote for this. This is, like, this is my house, right there around that bend on Forest Drive. It's the third one there. I would really, I would really rather not see this go in there. I think the biggest thing that bothers me the most is, is the fact that you got the aquifer running underneath there. And it's not, you know, we got to take care of that kind of stuff. This is where our water comes from. This is what we drink from. We can do better than this. Let's go to court. This, this realtor, these people are jerks. They threatened us. They're going to put something in that we don't like. We're going to have people here that we don't like. We can do better than this. All right? Let the courts decide.[1462.16][1462.16][applause]
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward?
Good evening. Russell Arnold, 3 Brook Court. I'm in the Intervale section. I just want to state that I'm against this project. Excuse me. I'm against this development of this parcel of land. And I'm also, I guess, a little annoyed that we're back here again after I thought that we were done with this. And I'd like the council to do what they had done before. And we're behind your decision originally to vote this project down. We'll stand behind you if you make that vote again and try and put this thing to bed already. We voted for some of you just for this specific reason. We'll stand behind you and we'll support you. Okay? Thank you.[1544.92][1544.92][applause]
Sir, could you just sign in?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I am a Republican, and I vote Republican. When necessary.[1554.13][1554.13][laughter]
Hi, Linda Heisen, 23 Rowan Arm Drive, Mountain Lakes. I wanted to ask what the plan is to use, for the use of the open space. Is it landlocked? Is it going to be made into a park? And what makes you so confident that with several towns applying for open-space land, that you will get the $3.5 million?
You know, in, in terms of the, the confidence in the application, you know, there's no guarantees on that. We've submitted an application, per the direction of the governing body. We think it's a very strong application on the merits. But, you know, there's a, there's an open space committee at the, at the county that will evaluate the application and the property, and, and they'll make a decision. So I, you know, they may recommend that the application be granted. They may recommend that it not be. We really don't know. You never do.
So if it's not granted, does the deal fall apart?
If, if it's not granted, then there's no obligation. The deal could fall apart because there's no obligation for the township to go forward at, at that point. It was really the, the, the agreement was really structured on, on the premise that the application would be granted. And if it's not granted, then the township can, can walk away from, from the deal. So, so the application obviously is important in terms of the viability of, of the settlement. In terms of the open space itself, that's really governed by the rules. I suppose it would be available for some sort of passive, passive recreation. I don't, I don't know enough. Maybe Ellen Sandman can address that because I think she's actually been on the property, but I don't think-
John, I can just talk a little bit to it. We're talking about walking trails throughout the property. And then also, we, we have some consideration for some, some passive sitting areas where in five seconds, when you leave corporate, you can go and enjoy, you know, this quiet, you know, peaceful setting. And I would like if, since I'm on, talking about it, you know, people keep talking buffer, buffer, buffer. But I did have a conversation with our planner, and I think that conversation needs to be heard. And that's, what are we talking about? About the percentage and how much more property is going to be preserved? It's not just a buffer. Ed, could you, could you describe, because I think it's an important part of what I did talk to the open space folks that I walked with on Saturday, what we're talking about as it relates to the buffer, and then what 10 acres is all about? Thank you.
Certainly. One thing I did take a look at is, just from the dimensions that are provided as, as to the survey, if you were to strike a 200-foot buffer along the R3 zone and then along the Intervale Road frontage, it's approximately 6.7 acres. They are about, in rough numbers, in total acreage. So what we're actually achieving is about an additional two and a half acres of additional open space in the development. So that's what I did computations on, which is something we had talked about.
Six, I, I'm, it was 6. what?
6.7.
6.7. And then we're talking about 9.27. So you're saying another 2.?
2.5 acres.
Right. But it's contiguous, and it's, you know-
Correct.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about, again, why it's difficult to calculate is because it's on the whole property.
Correct.
However, that's why we made sure that the, the part that we were going to be purchasing had the best, I guess, trees and, and- had the best, I guess, trees and, and, and not just shrub trees, that, that it was the better part to, to preserve.
It is the better part to preserve, plus is the grade change. If you were to look at the grade change between Forest Drive and/or Intervale Road, the two areas, the elbow along Intervale Road and the larger portion are, in fact, where you have the duaremos ridge or the ridge lines. And so that was very important to preserve those areas from a buffering standpoint. The height of that ridge line, as well as the height in the back, will effectively block the entire height of the buildings that are there. And that's without vegetation, considering the vegetation, it's actually going to be preserved on those areas. I just wanted to point out one other thing that's related to this, is that I also took a look at the proposal for open space on the 17 acres. They're proposing 26% open space on the 17 acres. When you add that to the open space parcel, it equates to about a 52% percentage of the overall tract, the two parcels, of open space that's being preserved in the end. So it's not just a small amount. It is 52% of the overall 26 acres, so approximately 13 acres.
Ed, would that be the lighter green area on the bottom? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
I mean, just, just for the record, and just so people see, you know, just some additional information as it relates to what we're gaining, not just what we're also purchasing. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.